Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 P.M. May 1st regular council meeting will now come to order. Please stand as council member Notaro for the invitation.
Father, please give us your wisdom in discernment in every challenge we face, help us to be humble, and willing to step in and act right from wrong. Please show us how to bring peace and bring harmony in the midst of chaos and injustice. Remind us that we are not troubled in the midst of trouble. Please help us to see that you are always working through our circumstances in our lives, even when our situations are less than we are given hope and grateful. And remind the courage to speak up in the moments we find ourselves in the midst of difficult times. Give us the discernment to make our case with this one and with the other, and to trust you in the outcome. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the visual of liberty and justice for all.
Patty, will you please call the floor?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reefer.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda, but I would like to add one item or insert one item into the consent agenda as item 13B, proclamation of May being looped as awareness month. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Councilmember Livingstone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? The agenda is amended. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as a...
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker.
Second.
Second by Leslie Notaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. Now we move to citizen comments. Any citizen who would like to address the council about a topic already on the agenda, please raise your hand. Wait to be called on, and we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Would anyone like to speak?
Mayor, city manager, council members, and citizens of Bellar Beach.
Let me pause you for one second. We've already saved your time. Would you please give us your name and your...
Oh, okay. I'm Clean Clayser, and I live on 21st Street, minus six, 21st Street. I know all of you. Okay. Today, we wanted to discuss geoengineering and its effect on clean air. I've provided a two-page explanation of this to our city. You can get a copy from our city clerk. I'm advocating for clean air above all. Without all of us breathing, all projects in Bellar Beach become worthless. We won't be here. I could not get this information to you in three minutes' time. Please press the card. Why is it important to understand how geoengineering, global warming, and globalist goals are affecting our air to recover our health and the health of our planet? Many of you may not know that it will take three years for all the particulate matter dispersed into our atmosphere through chemical aerial dispersion or geoengineering to settle to the earth. If all geoengineering is stopped immediately... You may also be surprised to know that we had three major volcanic eruptions within the last two weeks. March 28th in Papua New Guinea, March 27th in Japan, and currently an ongoing volcano in Vengatu. These natural eruptions can cause sulfur dioxide spinning around the atmosphere for approximately one and a half years. Sulfur dioxide is also used in geoengineering to dim the sun and cool the planet. The geoengineering plus natural infusion of sulfur dioxide in our atmosphere through volcanoes will cause greater dimming of the sun, causing even lower temperatures worldwide, leading to food production failure. Undulations in temperature and humidity will fast-track crop failures and food shortages as plants struggle to survive. Please look at the website, adapt 2030. That will give a lot of good information on this information. It is more important now than ever to stop geoengineering. We are more fortunate than most states, and that we only have our northern border shared with other states. If we stop aerial dispersions now, most of our states can start peeling quicker than those states that are landlocked. Global warming is a farce. It will be used as a lie to cover up what's coming. We are in the solar max of our 11-year solar cycle. We add five more years of warmth before we head into a normal, natural, cooler solar cycle. Watch for the weaponizing of these lies, propaganda coming your way, covering crop failures and global cooling. Now that the earth will be cooling faster than expected, what do they do with their global warming narrative now? Please review the references I provided in the speech. These were items I was going to talk about, and you'll have to get my speech to know what they're about. But I would help anybody in the city of Bellar Beach with looking at radio frequencies and 5G. I need to do that. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Plager. Would any other citizens like to say? Yes.
Hi. My name is Lou Durham. I live on 13th Street. I just wanted you all to know that this board paid, or we as citizens paid, to correct the flooding problem that we've had since we moved in in 2017, and it's fixed. It's fixed. All that money, all that mess, all the work that this board and former boards did has worked. We haven't been through a hurricane yet, but with all the story that was coming in recently from the east, not a drop. It all went down the sewer and out. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. It took forever, but it worked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durham. I appreciate it. Any other comments from the council? Yes, we have one.
Tammy Lavenda, 97 Harbor Drive. I'm up here today on behalf of the Bellar Beach Community Foundation once again. As a lot of you know, we had our first fundraiser last Saturday, Sunset Social Number's Day. I'd like to thank a lot of you for attending. I'd like to thank the sponsors and for all of you who helped us reach our goal to replace the kayak launch on 16th Street. So, we are very proud and very thankful for everyone for their contributions, and we hope that everyone had a great time. The city is working on the final details of the kayak launch, and as soon as those are completed, it will be installed. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenda. Any other comments from any citizens? Oh, all right. Move on to item three, which is a law enforcement report from the Nellis County Sheriff's Department.
Sergeant Swish, Nellis County Sheriff's Office. The activity tonight I'm presenting is going to be for the month of March 2023. Under the UCR property and personal crimes report, I'm happy to report that the only documented activity is one assault, which was domestic-related. Under arrest, there was only one subject arrested within the city, and that was for a warning. Under deputy activity, you can see there were a total of 649 events in the city, leaving that, as always, directed patrols, traffic enforcement, and parking enforcement. Next, there was one crash within the city that occurred at Gulf and Causeway, and I will circle back to that. There were a total of 147 citations and warnings issued. Touching on the crash that was at Gulf Boulevard and Causeway Boulevard, last month, if you remember, I was asked whether or not, if I could determine the causation of that crash at that particular intersection. I did look it up, and it looks like it was distracted driving. It was a three-vehicle crash. They were trying to turn north coming from westbound on Causeway to turn north on Gulf, and the last vehicle in line struck the vehicle in front, which subsequently struck the vehicle in front. Other than that, that is it.
Thank you, Sergeant. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? No. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Next up, code enforcement report.
Good evening, Deputy Steve Clack. For the record, commissioners, mayor, again, we had another active month with some of these code enforcement violations. As you can see on your sheets, the biggest one we're still having a problem with is the dealing with contractors, permits, and unlicensed individuals. There are still a few of them that I am following up on through the building department along with the construction licensing board. The other event that we had was the short-term rental. Just this past week, we had a hearing, again, two different violations at the same residence, and we have another one coming up this Thursday at that same residence. Other than that, that's my report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, deputy. Do we have any questions for the deputy? You're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir. You all have a great evening. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District. That'll be Chief Davis.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to give you the monthly report and tell you I was at the fundraiser, the kayak launch fundraiser. What a great time. I'm glad to see that they raised the money that they needed for that. What a really great time. Thank you very much. In the month of April, we had 15 calls for emergency services into Bellar Beach. I know that I talked to you before that I'm working diligently on getting an additional fire department unit that's fully staffed, fully funded by the county and no additional cost to our taxpayers. These taxpayers already pay that money, and I'm asking for the county to fund that unit. And my plan is to move a truck to be closer here to service Bellar Beach. So, I had one meeting last week with the county. I have one tomorrow, and then one at the end of May, and I really urge you to write to your MSAC committee, Emergency Services Advisory Council, and write to your county commissioners. This is the time of year that they make budget decisions, and it gets pushed up to the county commissioners. And this enhancement is a dire need to better serve our communities. So, I urge you to do that. On June 8th, 2023, we are hosting, right here in Bellar Beach, we are hosting a Hurricane and Water Safety Expo. It should have a flyer in front of you, but there's some flyers in the back there as well. And it's June 8th, 2023, from 1:00 to 6:00 P.M. We'll have some vendors here. They're going to do life jacket giveaways, beach and boat safety information. You can meet your local firefighters. There'll be a couple of meteorologists, one from Channel 10, Tampa Bay, and one from Bay News 9. And the Pinellas Suncoast Professional Firefighters Union will be hosting a cookout out here until supplies last, and I guess they'd be burgers and hot dogs and things like that. And we're also planning to do a demonstration with our fire boat here, our Marine Rescue Unit, and that is scheduled for 2:30. But the schedule's on the back of the flyer. Flyers are up on the table there, and we hope to have a great day with you all.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions or comments for Chief Davis? The council's very quiet tonight. I have a... Yes. Oh, we have one way down here in the end. Lloyd Roberts.
So, just a quick question on the cookout. Is that, will that start? That's very important to me. Will that start at 1:00 P.M.? Or do you know? I do not know. That part is sponsored by the union.
Okay.
But I'll make sure I find out. Any special requests, like what time do you like to eat there, sir?
Um, it's not real. It's not continuous.
All right. Continuous. All right. Well, since while supplies last, but I will find out exactly what time they're going to cook out.
Thank you, Chief.
And I'll let you know.
All right. And you can see we're councilmembers' priorities. I did have a couple of questions for you. This morning, there was a golf cart that somehow caught on fire. First off, do you know anything about how that fire started? And it's a two-part question. And then the second part, I noticed that the truck was coming from Largo that came in to service that fire. So, can you give us some details?
Yes, I can. So, that was just after 8:00 this morning. It was in the 24th Avenue in Erox Beach in Northern Inn, and the call came in as just a golf cart smoking, and I was actually driving in, and I thought there was a lot more than a golf cart on fire. It's, you know, a lot of thick black smoke pouring across, and until we get there and decide what's, you know, determine what's on fire, we ask for more people because it looked like possibly a building. A lot of times, vehicles will catch on fire inside a garage or next to another car, things like that. So, but that... So, I was the first one there, but I just happened to be on the road. We engine from Station 27, they're first due to that area, but they were out. So, the second due to that area is Clearwater's 44, which is on San Key. So, they were coming, and I was about a half mile away. I could see so much black smoke, which is an indicator there is something burning, that I had asked for additional units. They dispatched the rest of the units as if we were responding to a structured fire, which is a total of 15 more people. So, that might be what you saw when Largo was coming across the bridge, was on that fire response. But then, when I got there, I could see it was the golf cart that was fully involved. It had caught the power pole on fire. You know, we called the power company out to make sure the pole's safe and everything. As far as the cause, hasn't been determined. Most likely is from somewhere in the batteries there, you know, a charging issue. It wasn't plugged in. It was just sitting there, and it looked like the public beach access may have pulled it in there.
So, Kevin, is it electric or gas?
Uh, no, that was battery.
Battery.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. The only other comment I have or actually requested, I noticed that you gave us some statistics on emergency services that were provided in the city of Bellar Beach. Is there any way that you could maybe provide us with those, like give them to our email Patty?
Absolutely.
For the meeting so we can catalog them over. I think we, normally, our meetings are on Monday, and we shut down incoming documentation for the agendas on Wednesday.
Absolutely.
I would appreciate it.
And I'm happy to share that with you, and then have to explain everything, how they come up with those numbers and what everything means.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the fire chief? No. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, did Mr. Blachan make any...
No, I don't think so.
Okay. We were expecting a presentation from Pinellas County Metropolitan Planning Organization membership reading a portion of the plan, with plan. Okay. What I'm going to request is that we table this one and then bring it back up if he comes in, if that's okay with the council, and just continue on. All right. Item six, presentation. Where is the presentation?
Well, I...
Yeah.
Yeah. This is it. Yeah. Kyle was going to accept it. Are you going to accept it, Kyle?
No, I'm not.
Yeah.
I was around here to...
And I... Yeah, I don't have an actual certificate other than that.
That will work.
Okay, good.
All right. I'd like City Manager Reefer to meet me at...
It's presented to the Finance Department, City of Bellar Beach, by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. What that means is that we're doing everything right, and we're not failing any audits. We're doing everything to a standard that's the highest standard you can get from a municipality. So, congratulations to City Manager Reefer and the rest of the city staff and our accounting group.
Item seven, City Attorneys Report. Mr. Mora, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, all of you. As far as legal updates, we'll start with the legislative session. We have about four days left of the legislative session, and it can hopefully be a little less tense, at least for me. We're continuing to monitor a number of pieces of legislation. I emailed you this weekend about Senate Bill 774 on the financial disclosures. I'm not totally clear how to read where that is. On the Senate side, it unequivocally passed the Senate. Its House corollary says that there's an indication it was laid on the table, but then it says referencing, reference the Senate bill substitute. So, I can't tell if that means, when something's laid on the table for the House, that means it's equivalent to voting it down, especially at this stage in the legislature. I can't tell if they're saying the House version has been laid on the table, and we're now proceeding on the substitute, or if the House isn't moving on this. It'd be kind of surprising for how overwhelmingly it passed in the Senate to not see something in the House. I suspect it's the former, as I advised over the weekend, that they're just proceeding on the Senate version, but I will, of course, let you know, continuing to track that. Another bill that was of interest to one of the members here specifically was Senate Bill 154 and its House corollary, 1395, on the condo bills. And that was the condo inspections and sort of, depending on how you look at that, making it more flexible in light of the different needs of condominium communities across the state. That has been laid on the table in the House. It doesn't look like that'll be passing this session. One bill that's getting a lot of attention in this immediate area is Senate Bill 714. Senate Bill 714 has to do with the regulation of short-term rentals. It passed the Senate late last week. Senate Bill 714 makes it, it is being characterized publicly as giving tools to local governments to regulate short-term rentals. I think I spoke to this at some length last month. I would say that anything different than you have home rule powers for everything except these three things, where are you under pressure? We have those tools. We don't need this. And once you start listing them, it suggests everything else is off the table. It did pass the Senate. It is going before the House, if it's going. It is in messages to the House. The House did not hear it today, that I'm aware of, though. We're still tracking the session, so, you know, things can change moment to moment. That bill is of less import here. I don't want to get everybody freaking out. You have regulations and restrictions for short-term rentals that predate June of 2011, which is a magic date in this legal regime. And the reason that magic date exists, it dates back to, they passed the first version of this preemption in the 2011 session and said, as long as you don't, as long as it exists before June 2011, you can keep them. And they've kept that construct. There have been a few efforts over the years to say, to even take that away. That did not come up this session. So, it shouldn't be of terrible impact here, as long as we don't go takering with more short-term rental restrictions. But you can see the concerns in a lot of your other beach communities that may not be in that, or communities across Florida that may not be in that same position. As indicated, this bill passed the Senate. There was strong indication during the session during which it passed that Senate leadership was behind this. Where leadership is supported, something, it seems more indicative that it's likely to pass, especially again, given the numbers this session of one party being in power and the governor being of that same party. It seems, especially now that there's a push, a lot of the front end of the first month of session has been publicly characterized as the legislature largely passing. Much of the governor's request and initiatives legislatively in this last two or three weeks has been the legislature trying to catch up to getting their initiatives out. Even if something passes the House and Senate, as you all know, it still needs the governor's signature. Not sure, he hasn't articulated anything that he would explicitly be vetoing. This session, that doesn't mean he won't do it. We just don't know what those things are. All of that to say, we will, session ends Friday. We'll know better, at least what has the possibility of being signed. There is not a hard timeline. It's this weird thing. Once they pass the House and Senate, they go to the governor's desk. He doesn't have to sign them all by, like, May 15th or June 1st. Last year, we were waiting in July to see if some things would be signed. In fact, I remember talking to, remember Shirley, while I was at a continuing education course, you were saying, at that course, we're still waiting to see if he's going to sign some bill. So, it is entirely possible that after session ends, we'll still, there will still be a little bit of a guessing game on where things are going to lie, but given the governor's current public profile, it seems he's going to be eager to show that he's getting things done, moving them along. There were a few bills signed as recently as this afternoon. So, that's where we stand on the legislative session. Something that has been brought up either in my report or otherwise over the last few months is the matter of the property with the radio antenna tower. I exchanged correspondence with their attorney just this afternoon. At the, on April 13th, he sent some correspondence indicating he intended to have it done by the end of the month. Today being May 1st, I said, you know, we located code enforcement in light and reliance on this. Where do you stand? He said, we submitted Wednesday. There was a technical issue given the volume of the document and transmitting it. It's going to have a propagation study. He says it should be roughly 80 pages of submissions. It will be substantive. It won't be a, you know, a hand-drawn thing in two sheets of paper. And of course, the staff will have to review that and make sure that it, you know, see what... I just can't speak to what the result of that would be because it has to go through review, but that is where we stand. We should have that submission this week, likely by Wednesday. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I don't have anything else that I can do to get at this time.
Counselor?
All right. I just want to thank you for pushing that issue of the permit, and things have been up now for over a year. And I did some research on it myself. I can't find any of those towers that would be wind resistant over 90 miles per hour. I'm not there to look at the permit or anything like that. I appreciate you keeping on this, and I hope you'll keep doing your part.
And I know you sent some information of that effect, and of course, we will look to that as a resource as staff conducts its review once we have the documents and it may involve questions if there are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? City Attorney?
I appreciate all the updates. It sort of looks like Bellar Beach is a minority as far as the thinking, short-term rentals and what's going on. There's little towns here and there that are in a unique position like we are, where we're in our grandfathering. But whenever I attend the various meetings around the county, there are very few people like us in Pinellas County.
I think you're in the minority based on your posture in having some kind, you know, having that grandfather protection, because again, that industry really emerged, began to emerge. Airbnb's pilot program was, I believe, was the Democratic National Convention, apart from a few trade shows back in 2008. And so, you know, that was really an nascent industry, and government doesn't typically respond to tech that quickly. That is to say that, yes, you, there are not a lot of communities outside of, unless you were like a Key West, where this is your old industry and you're trained to regulate this. But I think you're in the majority of communities in Florida who don't understand why you're being told how to regulate your local community and being told that however you choose to do it. and being told that however you choose to do that, whether it's to open the floodgates or otherwise, that that should be defined by the state. You know, and I think that there's been, the history of Florida on home rule going back to 1968 and the character that it's developed, community to community, community to community throughout the state. The reason why Hannah Maria is different than Bellar Beach, is different than Juno Beach, that's how that evolves. But once you make those uniform regulations, it makes it a lot more difficult for this place to have quite a charm and this place to be where you go for the resort. So I think you're in the majority of states, of cities, or municipalities who would just wish to preserve status quo of being able to regulate as you see that.
Would you consider 714 faint instead of a solution?
I'm sorry, would I consider, what was the verb?
Faint.
Faint? Sorry, that term invokes something else in my mind. I would say that I would consider 714 to be masquerading as something in itself.
All right, fair enough. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to Item 8, City Manager's Report. Take away Mr. Reefer.
Mayor, let's start off with the underground project. And as you've probably seen, we have a whole bunch of conduit rolls and conduit plates at the City Marina on the southern end. They're trying to tuck it away for the storage of the project. We have all the materials except for the four-inch conduit rolls, which is actually the majority of things to be installed on the project. Got correspondence with the contractor today, knows that it will be delivered this week. If so, I'll get official, you know, declaration that they'll be starting, what date they'll be starting. I'll pass that along to you. So that's exciting because once we have the material, I know they'll get going on it and they'll be moved through rather quickly. The stormwater improvement projects, that was the last meeting. We got the note approved to cover the remaining BMPs of the stormwater master plan. That is an agenda that is on the regular agenda. The children's playground replacement, as you can see, it's been removed, the old playground. We actually received $300 for it. The used playgrounds company actually gave us a check. It was good that we removed it because the support pole, a lot of it were very rusted and those couldn't be utilized. So they did give us some money for what it was worth to them. The new playground should be coming this week. It has an installer set up to receive the delivery and they should be able to get it in pretty quickly, so we'll finally get that done. Personnel policy, I've gotten that back from a consultant. Doing some review edits, answering some questions. And then I will pass it along to Mr. Mora's legal firm to review, to make sure it's where it needs to be as far as employment logos. Grant policy, that was on the city manager's goals. I would like to bring it to the next work session. We're going to administer a policy to get councils to input on that. As a reminder, I have the FCCMA conference to attend the Memorial Day week, which is Tuesday through Thursday, so it's May 30th through June 2nd. Some other notes I made. We installed the Park Mobile system and it's operational during the transition period. We put some, we shut down the meters, the physical meters, and put some signs on it to direct the customers to use Park Mobile. And I think, believe it was on Wednesday. And then the first weekend, we actually, we did over $4,000 worth of sales. So people are using it. The first two weeks, I recommended to the deputies that we do not take it if they have not paid. We got all these little wallet cards that was provided by Park Mobile to give them a warning, give them a how-to wallet card, you know, to ease the transition. So last weekend was a good example. I tried to pull numbers on it, had to, I believe we only did about $400, but with the leather, it was explainable. So the staff actually started to remove physical meters today. So this lab, this lab with the marines, it's awfully thick, so they're trying to come up with a creative solution to get that one out of there. But I've been in contact with the Flover, this company that we bought those from, and hopefully get those sold back to get some money or good income. The ARPA money, we did our first report and we reported the use of the $7,000, or $753,000 of the 802 AMR 2000. So that has been reported. The remaining money will go towards whatever, more expenses we have in the stormwater account. But just to let you know that that has been reported because we have to do that roughly a year. The city, with the help of the Citizens Advisory Committee Chair, Ron Seganek, is entertaining, switching banks to Valley, which is over the bridge. If you're familiar with it, before the gas station on the left. They're offering fifty bonus points above the target Fed fund for the interest, which is much better than we're getting from tourists who are curmied with. And they're also not going to charge us any banking fees. And we currently, you know, on a monthly basis, you know, a hundred, $200 worth of fees, so we won't have to pay anyone. So Heather and I are going to go to the branch and meet with them on Friday. And if everything looks good, I won't bother be asking for signature cards from you guys to transfer over. And we'll do it over time so that we have a council to handle, so it's easy to transition. And Heather is working on putting the budget together to deliver back to me. I believe our calendar is set through the 12th or the 13th. But I'd like, once I have the budget, to distribute it to you guys and have some meetings, one-on-ones, to talk it over, what I'm planning on doing this year before we have our first budget meeting. That's all.
Thanks for the detailed report. Any questions or comments? City Manager?
Is there a second page to the City Manager's Report?
There is. There is no second page, is there?
Okay, the rest of it was just sort of off?
Yeah, Park Mobile, I didn't put it as an actual project, I meant it was just more reporting.
Any questions?
The increase, is it supposed to, I thought it was supposed to go into effect like midnight or 4:01 a.m. Friday, $5, $10 an hour? Or is that set?
No, that was set by resolution. So when we made the transition to Park Mobile, I had it set up with the new fees. We have the second reading of the fines for ordinance changing. So that, if passes tonight, will be in effect. And then my plan was to actually start taking this week after that court decision that passed.
Wait, I guess, simple question is, is Friday after, I forget, eight hours or eight, three, four? Does it go to $10 or does it stay?
Oh, I'm sorry, the rate change, that is weekends and holidays. So Friday is $5 an hour and then Saturday, Sunday and holidays.
Is it $10? I was here picking my book Friday night and I punched it in, it was still $5. And I thought it was, I thought it was going to be $10.
I did not have, I have weekends and holidays.
Whatever it is, it might not be a bad idea to have the rates published on the website this week. Okay. Any other questions or comments for the City Manager? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Reefer.
Thank you.
All right, we are up to Item 9, City Clerk's Report. Deirdre, you have it.
This is just a quick recap of April, which seems like so long ago. The City Yards sale that was, you know, pretty, went off really well. City Attorney Mora gave his government the sunshine, which that was well attended. Now, people were thankful for that. We had a flood insurance workshop that gave updates on flood insurance here at, in the council chambers. The mayor and council gave their luncheon to thank all the board, committee and foundation members. And the committee members of the foundation and the boards, they were all very appreciative. They were very appreciative, they expressed that. And the Audit Committee Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The final meeting on that should be May 3rd. They hope that that will be their final meeting. And then the Planning and Zoning Comprehensive Plan Review. Their final meeting will probably be the 9th. And that's that date.
Any questions or comments for the City Clerk? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Deirdre, I appreciate it. All right. All right, up next is Item 10. This is consideration of Ordinance 23-02, this is the second reading. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Ordinance 23-02, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Bellar Beach, Florida, admitting Section 58-38, fines and procedures to increase the fines associated with parking violations, ratification, severability and foreign effective date. This has been the second and final reading of Ordinance 23-02 by Title 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Before we go to the council, I would like to open the floor to the citizens. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Okay, citizen comments are closed. Before we open discussion, I'm going to need a motion to approve Ordinance 23-02. Do I have a?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Natero. Mr. Banker, you have the floor.
Well, as noted during the first reading, I stated that the current fine is only $35. And I just noted that you raised the part of these, I thought it was on Friday, it's due with the $10 per hour, so it made no sense to keep them at $35. It's, you can park all day for $35 and our time limit now is only three hours. So even though the fines are still a little bit low, in my opinion, I hope this motion goes.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. Do we have any other comments or questions? All right, Mr. Banker, I'm going to give you one last word if you'd like. All right, so Patty, has this ordinance been noticed in probation?
Yes, sir.
Great. In that case, let's take it to a vote. Patty, would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So the ordinance passes unanimously. And that's Ordinance 23-02.
All right, so now we are on to the consent agenda. Items 11, 13D. This is for approval of April 3rd, 2023, City Council Meeting minutes. This is to authorize the City Manager to execute an interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and local governments for their cooperative procurement, had dental work today, bear with me, procurements of disaster debris collection and removal services and disaster debris monitoring and management services within geographic Pinellas County. Also, a proclamation recognizing this week as the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Lupus Awareness Month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes, but I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to break out this proclamation concerning the Professional Municipal Clerks Week because I think we have a wonderful clerk and this deserves to be read. So even though it's already, it's already official, I'm going to go ahead and read it to everyone right quick. This is proclamation of the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. It's April 30th through May the 6th, 2023. Whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. Whereas, the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the uniform, or I'm sorry, as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas, Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Dave Gaddis, Mayor of the City of Bellar Beach, do recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2023 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Patricia Gentry, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent dated this first day of May, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Now we are on to Item, no vote, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, I'd like to make, just a quick comment on the great job our City Manager did in whatever he did in our city in the interlocal agreement with Pinellas County and the debris cleanup. And the reason for that is, how important it is. If we were to do that on our own, I have seen from a history standpoint that regardless of the agreement you may have with companies out there, when it comes time, even though you have a signed agreement in place, they're going to go typically for the highest paid options available. The fact that this is with Pinellas County and Mark's much larger group and all the cities that have signed it as well, less likely to happen. So this is a great idea and I think that positions the city very well for being able to have those services provided if and when we have to. So, good job, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, we are now on to Item 14. This is for authorization to execute a purchase order with Gemini Engineering and Sciences Incorporated for stormwater master drainage plan, BEMs. This was placed on the agenda by City Manager Reefer. Mr. Reefer?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for authorization to execute a purchase order with Gemini Engineering and Sciences Incorporated. This is to complete the design and engineering services for stormwater master plan updated in 2016. The remaining BMPs, which stands for Best Management Practices for the Drainage Program. It would be numbers six, nine, 10, 11, 12, 15 and 14. It addresses the streets in those areas, which is Ninth Street, Harbor Drive, Cedar Drive, Spruce Drive, Palm Drive, 14th Street, 15th Street, 16th Street, 17th Street, 18th Street, 19th Street, 20th Street, 21st Street, 23rd Street, 24th Street, 25th Street and Morgan Drive. The amount of the PO to be executed is $360,000 and 360, 374. So, little history, like I said, the master drainage plan was updated in 2016. Since then, there were fifteen BMPs. We prioritized, eight of those fifteen have been completed. The last council meeting on April 3rd, we approved the note to provide funding to complete the additional seven BMPs. Since then, I presented the project scope to all six engineering firms that we have signed agreements with from our RFQ, put out, I believe, December. The, I told them that the timeline I'd like to hit was to have a complete 100% The, I told them that the timeline I'd like to hit was to have the complete 100% construction plans and technical specifications ready for competitive bidding by August 15th. Of those six, I heard back confirmation from four that they could meet that timeline. Of those four, I selected Gemini Engineering and Sciences, which is actually, it came out to be our highest range from the RFQ. This project is going to include repairing and/or replacing stormwater pipes and inlet structures. It's going to replace all the valley curving and resurfacing of the pavement on all those streets I mentioned earlier. I also have included the lining of the pipe segments from the closest inlet to the seawall on 12th Street and 13th Street, which was the last project that was determined that needed to be done in the future. We thought it would get a better cost line, you know, pricing, I guess I should say, for doing the lining along with this project, because I'm sure there's going to be some other lining that is going to be in the design. It's important to note that Gemini Engineering and Sciences is going to reanalyze each BMP and design plans to best address the deficiencies that the city has. And we want to achieve the highest benefit to cost ratio, so the money we put in won't see a big change in fact. I started drafting the work authorization agreement for this job based on the proposal, which I've included Engineering Sciences Incorporated proposal, the BMP project maps from the stormwater master plan, as well as the continuing contract for professional services that was signed. And the, I made it note that the CLI will be updated, because I think it expires.
Thank you for the description of this contract, and before we go to the council, we're going to go to the citizens. Would anyone like to comment on this project? Yes.
John Hanson, 22nd Street. I'm assuming that the sewer was lined, which would be on the south side of the median recently, because that's what they were doing. Now, going back a little bit, when they did work back there in Bella Island Estates, they paved from the bridge to Gulf Boulevard, both sides of the median. And I remember having a conversation with Mr. Lynn Reeves about the damaged valley curving between Bay Shore and Gulf, that that would be replaced at such time as they got up towards that end of the city. I just was glancing through there, and I see nothing that indicates there's any consideration for repairing, not repairing, replacing damaged valley curving. And I have a significant amount in front of my property, and I'm sure there's others between Bay Shore and Gulf, so my question is, was 22nd Street omitted, or is it included in this bid?
So we're still very, we're doing the design phase, so that is something that we can look into, and if, you know, while doing the other curving, it would be the ideal time to replace what needs to be done there, given that the street is already going to be surfaced, this deal wouldn't be as neat, but I will hope not with that.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson, and Ms. Stewart?
Hi. I'm Lou Durham again. I don't understand construction or anything with what you're talking about, but I heard 12th and 13th Street still needs something done to seal the, huh? That's my question.
Okay, so towards the end of the project, we did inspections on the pipes that were run between the homes, that were, we couldn't access without, you know, tearing up the ground in that area, and discovered that they're not failing, but they are deteriorating, and it was recommended with the engineer that we get those aligned. We felt that during this large project that we have coming up, that if we include it in the bid, we're going to get competitive pricing, ideal pricing for that job.
So that's, that's between the homeowner's property and the new sewers that we put in?
So these pipes are from the inlets on Bay Drive?
Okay.
The ones that are at the end of 12th and 13th Street respectively, and they run from those inlets, breakdown property lines to seawalls.
Okay. Don't have to pull up the street again, do you?
No, it, they'll go through the manhole. It's, it's exactly what they're doing to the actual sewer system the county's doing right now with those trucks. They'll run cure and place piping through the pipes.
Is there anything that we as homeowners are supposed to do to prepare for this, or will we get a notice of some kind, or does it matter?
We can, we will send a notification to our constant contact to let you know when they're in the area, because typically when we do our stormwater projects, we do door hangers to notify all residents in those areas that, you know, something's about to occur. But I can't say exactly, we'll know during the construction phase when they plan on moving over and doing the lining of those streets.
Are we talking years to do a bike again, or?
No, it'll last maybe two days, probably number one.
The company that didn't work on our street just did a superlative job. I mean, they just, they came back, they fixed anything that was wrong, and they did it in like a record time, you know, so.
I hope they have a bid on these next five.
Okay, I'm just surprised to hear there is still anything left to do.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be seamless, should take matter days.
Okay.
And from there, everything will be ready.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other questions or comments from the citizens regarding this topic? All right, so before we begin debate on this, we're going to need a motion on this, on this authorization to execute a purchase order with Gemini Engineering. Would someone like to make a motion? So, motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Second by Joey Shirley, Vice Mayor Shirley. Mr. Roberts, you have a floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is the appropriate path we're taking, which is excellent. We're going to have one engineering firm come in and review the BMPs that are already in place by a previous engineering firm, is that correct? In addition to the new areas to be designed. So this will be a great opportunity for the city, as well as anybody on this council who wants to be involved, to make sure that we review that, work with the City Manager to be comfortable that the direction that the city's going, as Tom mentioned earlier, is the most cost-effective process that we'll be pursuing. So I think it's a great idea, I'm very happy this is the direction we're going, and I think it's best for the city.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I have a question, I can't, I noticed that Gemini is at Jacksonville, do they have local offices?
Yes, they have an office in the same district.
Okay. We have, didn't have other boards for other local engineers?
Not for this project, but the way our agreement is set up, we can't actually competitively bid engineering services, because it's prohibited under CCNA.
So I noticed this is, where will he be again? Are you?
Yeah, he'll be the principal, and I've met his other staff during the RFQ interview process.
And there is staff, so.
Yes.
There's been some, well, there's a house using him, and he's got staff to support him?
He does.
Mr. Reaver, will they also be making recommendations on the logic of order if this project should be rolled out?
Yes, it'll be designed as best as possible when we lay out the plans of its bid on, because, let me check into that, because I don't know the extent we can tell the construction company to do, or how that will affect the bidding process, so I don't think that.
Okay, the reason why I ask is I just want to attack small problems in front of big problems. I think it would be, in our best standards, to attack the bigger problems first, unless they're just, unless it's just this huge financial burden to be there.
So, the project construction phase, it's proposed to be 365 days. We can try to tighten that up when we actually go off to bid. The intention is to get it done as quickly as possible, although I think that the contractors don't want to do so. The exact order, again, I need to talk to the engineer, we can be done about that.
My fear is, is we've got these, this stack of projects, and storm season is approaching, and there's somewhat more need than someone else, and I would prefer that, I think, probably everyone, if it's not a big, like I said, a huge financial burden, to attack those lower line areas first. Any other questions or comments on this? No? All right, Mr. Roberts?
So we'd like to point out, based on what the mayor just said, which is very accurate, that we're not asking for the design to be completed by August the 15th, right?
So, the timeline is, we're expecting to have everything ready to advertise for bid by, you know, August. So then, oh wow, we're looking at five, six weeks, make sure we have a lot of some bills for that, and then, you know, tabulations, bring it to the meeting for selection. I'm hoping construction starts late fall.
Right, and that's my point, bringing that up, so by then, the storm season theoretically is done, right, which would be a great time for the construction standpoint, so that when they start construction, hopefully we won't have any hurricanes at that point, so it'd be good.
What do you mean by late fall?
November.
Because the last two years, we've had two pretty big, sorry, storms in November, first week.
It can happen.
Yeah. And the residents had spoken, they had the perfect time for when they had their streets done, because it was storming through IC. So, I think November 15th, and by November 15th, I think the warm ice. Is the engineering firm going to be coming into any of these little sessions that we're having to discuss?
My intention to have them do at least one presentation, I just don't keep their name.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Roberts?
I'm not an insurance expert by any stretch, but on the insurance from the engineering firm, is there any way we could ask them about their, their official insurance that is included on the contract with them, that they have that, just in case we run across something where that would be beneficial to the city?
I can investigate, I, all the insurance is laid out in the actual RFQ agreement and the contract, but I can speak with Mr. Moore's colleague, who I've been working with on that.
Thank you.
Last call for questions or comments. All right, Patty, let's, let's take this to a vote.
Okay.
This is for authorization to execute a purchase order with Gemini Engineering and Sciences, Inc., for stormwater master drainage plan BMPs. Patty?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, and so, you know, Mr. Reaver, authorized to execute? Thank you. All right, move on to my favorite item tonight, item number 15. This is for consideration of merit pay increase for City Clerk based on annual evaluation criteria. This was placed on the agenda by City Manager Reaver. Mr. Reaver?
Thank you, Mayor. So I compiled all the evaluations that were filled out by the council members, and did a tabulation of how the scoring turned out. I believe we had one that, you know, didn't have every category, but I weighed it out to make sure that we averaged the overall scoring to, to reflect what this country is doing in their evaluations. So I hope in sending that to you, it was easily understood. If you have any questions, please let me know, I can answer for you.
All right, before we go to the council, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on this particular Geni item? All right, back to the council, I'm going to need a motion on this.
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Wow. All in favor? Yeah, no, okay, so I'm going to give that one to Mike Sager. All right, Mr. Banker, do you have a floor?
Where have you read that proclamation for, for what year? I don't know, 5% is enough? If that's the proposal in front of us, I think you should get it.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. Would anyone else like to comment? No? All right, I, I agree with Mr. Banker, and I think that it's well deserved and fully justified. If there are any other comments from the council, I'd like to go ahead and call it a vote. Patty? All right, Patty?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, and so it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Gentry, and thank you for all your.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Mayor, I think you should have asked, did that, we discussed this last month, called Stormwater, this is retro to our anniversary date?
I think that's what we discussed, yes. All right, we're on to general business, item number 16. Do we have any general business to discuss? Okay. We brought along two comments. Since we're doing random orders and we're moving chairs around, I've given the computer a rest this month, and we're going to begin from my left to right, so we'll begin with Lloyd Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm so, I'm so happy that I got to move to this side now. Get those honors. I would like to thank our City Manager for setting up a meeting with the Pinellas County Traffic Transportation Division. I think it went very well. They came with two staff members from the county, along with their traffic consultant that they've worked with before, that we have worked with before. The plan is now, the consultant's going to go back to the drawing board and gather more data since the last time that they did the study. I think it's interesting that the first time they did the study was right around the infamous COVID time, so we all know that the traffic was significantly impacted by that. So I think we'll get some very different numbers when they do the study again. The county's picking up the tab for that, so we don't have any expenditures for that, and I think they're anticipating to come back. What was the timeframe around, approximately? I thought they were telling us about for four months? Okay. So at that time, we'll have a better idea of what some of the options are regarding what will impact the traffic on Gulf Boulevard and Causeway Boulevard as well, to be able, the goal is to just make it better. It's never going to be perfect, but I'm confident we can make it better, and that's what we're taking a look at right now. So just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. Just a little interesting side note, I would have lost a lot of money on this bet. We actually had conversations in the meeting about the various crosswalks that we have up here on Causeway Boulevard and Gulf Boulevard. I would have bet all the money I have, and all the money that Dave has, that there were two crosswalks on the north and south side of Causeway Boulevard. And there's not. There's just one on the north side. So my wife and I were walking the beach the other day, and we had to cut up sooner than we normally do because of the high water marks. So there's not one on that side. So that's going to factor in, I think, somewhat with regards to what some of our options are to improve the turning scenarios. our options are, to improve the turning scenarios and the traffic situation there at the intersection of Causeway and Gulf Boulevard. So that's what we're looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, let's, let's move on to Leslie Natairo.
For the comments.
Okay, well, I'm going to comment for you. Ms. Notaro will be standing in for me at the mayor's council this Friday, because I will be able to attend. I have a prior engagement, it's a, it's a charity event, and they are, they're actually doing a piece on my deceased mother's law. So I appreciate you being with me, and I'm sure everyone will be happy to see you there. All right, let's move on to Councilmember Livingstone.
Good evening. Patty, thank you for all that you do. This is your week celebrated.
Thank you.
We had a wonderful day on Wednesday, thanking all of our committee members, and it was such a great time. So again, Patty, I know you and some others put that together, thank you. But thank you to all the committee members and the community. We volunteer, it really makes a big difference, and we truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Livingstone. All right, now Frank Banker.
I'm trying to. At our last board session, I was directed to recontact former Councilman Robert Battle, stepping off with a foot. Mr. Banker, you think? Flood mitigation working crew. So I spoke to him, and he didn't really want to step off, but he told me, um, speed does it at the time, we notified the city manager, we'll keep looking at it anyway. But I have a word with Senator Scott, who seems to be the only one that's really concerned, has any kind of compassion for what FEMA did to people that live on Barrett Islands and everything like that, when they changed in October of 2021, if you remember, a former city manager gave a presentation on FEMA 2.0. I'm sorry.
I can tell people get their.
So since the beginning of last year, I had residents come up to me and tell me, geez, my flood insurance doubled, okay? I have to drop it. I don't want to take the words out of Senator Scott's mouth, but he had a hard press meeting with FEMA director, I think it was December or November of last year, and he says, you're putting my constituents at the point right now, should we get insurance? Because when the retirees are living in Florida, we're, you know, that's, that's the choices that we're going to have. On top of that, our state legislation had an emergency session last year regarding citizens' wind, and Bill 2A actually now says your wind policy must meet your flood policy. So whatever your flood policy says, your wind policy has to meet it. They also said anything, any structure that's valued over $700,000 to replace, they're not going to cover it. So you're going to have to go to private market to find coverage on that. So it's just the totality. So I was able to get a three-way conversation from DC and Senator Scott's office here last Wednesday, who went over all this, and then I got another address Friday morning about a resident saying, hey, my flood insurance, I can't afford it, it almost doubled. So I got into it, I went into assurance, who's one of the underwriters for the NFIP. And I said, I cannot find the discounts that we're supposed to get, because if you look at 2.0, just the first page of 2.0, will tell you your elevation, which is located, but most of us all have elevation certificates, and if you don't, you should get it. It'll tell you your highest level and your lowest level. And I think once, section C, it'll say discounts. So I said, it's given a $15 discount, and the house is four feet above seawall. So she says, I think the $15 discount is because your city complied with all the regulations in 2021, which I said, I think we spent over $100,000 to comply with it, and it turns out it's a $15 discount. She says, well, let me look at it. She couldn't find an explanation. So then when she started saying about the discounts of, you know, why isn't there, because if you're one foot, you should get 10%, if you're two foot, you should get 20%, so I said, why isn't there discounts noted on that? So she says, I think the math formula is this. And she says, no, that doesn't make sense. So then she gave me a 400-page manual that FEMA came out with, okay, explaining discounts, which she couldn't explain. So she then told me to contact FEMA, which I did. They gave me the NFIP, and I went right to, right to them. They told me to go to National Flood, or was it Insurance Agents, they gave me their toll free number, located in the Philippines. This is like, this is a joke, but it's costing us a fortune. So after 20 minutes, and I'm not trying to disrespect for, explaining what I wanted from this person in the Philippines, in the name of being, I asked to speak to the manager, on hold for 15 minutes, and got discounted. So I contacted the senator again this morning, but this is, this is a problem that a lot of people, especially senior citizens who fix incomes, are saying, I can't afford to insure my house anymore. And plus, I'm not going to get you that long, I appreciate, I'm just trying to paraphrase all this. I'm looking at it, I'm working on it, I'm trying to come up with.
It's completely understandable, your frustration. I've had it on several meetings where they were trying to give us some sort of a formula, and no one actually knows. What, what I can tell, based upon what I've seen, is that this is an obscene wealth tax, that they really can't tell you where the extra money is going to, or what it's for. I, I think the goal is, is to cover people and put them out of business so that those are foreclosed on, or sold, knocked down, and then built up, or something else.
What my main, my main concern to me, everybody, is if these insurance premiums go to, and I'm talking 10, 15, $25,000 for a typical home of $700,000, you're not going to find people able to purchase a home, and the values are just going to go right in the quarter. And that's with citizens, that's not even with NFIP, and then most of these private flood margins, they all, so. It's a mess, and there is a clean formula, 2.0, but nobody wants to apply.
I, I'd be happy to see or hear anyone actually explain it properly. I think it's just too complex.
Yeah, 400 feet.
And they don't want you to know what that is. Any other comments, Mr. Banker?
I, I appreciate all your research. I'm trying, I'm trying.
All right, let's go to Mike Zabel.
Yeah, just thank you to Councilman Banker for trying down the bottom, and I really appreciate that, but other than that, I have no comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zabel. All right, let's go to Vice Mayor Shirley.
Nothing further, me.
Okay, I guess it's left to me. First off, I'd like to thank those who came out and had coffee with the mayor the other morning, it was nice meeting with you and having some interesting conversations. I'd also like to commend Bella Beach Community Foundation for their hard work, along with all who have volunteered to contribute or contributed to their efforts. I'd also like to thank all those who currently serve on a committee or board in Bella Beach. It's always safe to just sit in on and complain on social media, but it gets very little done. Instead, each of you have done something much braver, required far more effort. You have donated your time, money, and talents to the city you call home. On behalf of this council and city staff, I'd like to thank you all. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
The motion made by Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Vice Mayor Shirley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.